Welcome to the May 12, 2025, meeting of the Sandusky City Commission. We'll have an invocation offered by myself, followed by the pledge. Dear Lord, may we come together with wisdom and compassion to serve our community, guide our discussions and decisions for the common good of this community. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Mars, you call the roll.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Crable?
Here.
Ms. Fargo?
Here.
Mr. Waddington?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Pajali?
Here.
Mr. Coontz?
Here.
Commissioners, you have before the minutes of our meeting of April the 28th, 2025. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Wadding.
I move that we accept the minutes of the April 28 meeting as presented.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Tonight, we will be swearing in our newest firefighter, Nathan Elder. Mr. Orzak, will you perform this ceremony for us?
We don't stand up to read these statements. I can't see it yet.
I, Nathan Elder, recognizing my fundamental duty as a firefighter of the City of Sandusky Fire Department, must I swear to uphold the standards of my profession by safeguarding the life and property of our citizens against a threat of fire and disaster. I, Nathan Elder, recognizing my fundamental duty as a firefighter of the City of Sandusky Fire Department, must I swear to uphold the standards of my profession by safeguarding the life and property of our citizens against a threat of fire and disaster. I promise to obey the duly constituted laws of the United States of America, the State of Ohio, the City of Sandusky, and to accept the badge of my office as a symbol of faith, leadership, and trust to be honored by the firefighter of the City of Sandusky Fire Department. I promise to obey the duly constituted laws of the United States of America, the State of Ohio, the City of Sandusky, to accept the badge of my office as a symbol of public faith, leadership, and trust to be honored for as long as I remain the firefighter of the City of Sandusky Fire Department. I will continually strive to serve our community and to be an influence for good before my fellow officers and firefighters to the best of my ability to so help them. I will continually strive to serve our community and to be an influence for good before my fellow officers and firefighters to the best of my ability to so help them.
Commissioners, Nathan, he's originally from here on, and he currently lives in Shiloh, Ohio. He lives there with his girlfriend and his one-year-old daughter. Prior to being hired by Sandusky Fire Department, Nathan worked for the Willard Fire Department for approximately five months. Nathan has his firefighter two certification. He's a certified EMT, and he's enrolled in the paramedic program, Eddie Hovey. He's going to be on number three shift under the direction of Captain Jim Green. Congratulations, Nathan.
Next, we have a proclamation honoring 100 years of service of the Lions Club. In 1917, Melvin James, a 38-year-old Chicago business leader, told members of his local business club they should reach beyond business issues and address the betterment of their communities and the world. After contacting similar groups around the United States, an organizational meeting was held on June 7 of 1917 in Chicago, Illinois, and took the name of one of the invited groups, the Association of Lions Clubs. And at the national convention in October of the same year, where a constitution, bylaws, objectives, and a code of ethics were approved, in 1925, the Sandusky Lions Club was officially chartered on July 1 of 1925 during the International Lions Club Convention, held right here at Cedar Point in Sandusky, Ohio. Remarkably, the Sandusky Lions Club is one of only two Lions Clubs worldwide sponsored directly by the International Association of Lions Clubs rather than another local club. In 1925, Helen Keller addressed the Lions Club International during their annual convention at Cedar Point in Sandusky, challenging the Lions to become knights of the blind in the crusade against darkness. After speaking these words, "The opportunity I bring to you, Lions, is this: to foster and sponsor the work of the American Foundation for the Blind. Will you not help me hasten the day when there shall be no preventable blindness, no little deaf blind child untaught, and no blind man or woman unaided?" 100 years later, Lions Clubs International is the world's largest service organization with 1.4 million members in more than 46,000 clubs in over 200 countries, helping people with eye exams, glasses, surgeries, vision machines, children's vision screening, and white canes. Now, therefore, I, Richard Brady, President of the Sandusky City Commission, do hereby commend the Sandusky Lions Club for their 100th charter anniversary in the City of Sandusky and ask the citizens of Sandusky to join me in congratulating the Lions Club for their dedicated service to our community through their steadfast volunteerism, community service, and civic engagement dated this 12th day of May 2025. Ms. Mars, I'll ask you to take control of this proclamation and forward it to the Lions Club. I know they have a celebration there, I believe, this Saturday, the 17th, of all places, at Cedar Point.
Yes.
Our next proclamation is going to be delivered by Commissioner Vargo. It is a yearly proclamation that we've been doing for as long as I've been on this commission. It is your click-it-or-ticket proclamation.
Okay. As Memorial Day holiday weekend approaches and summer seems around the corner, an increased number of drivers will be traveling, and the safety and the security of the citizens of the City of Sandusky and the surrounding area are vitally important. The 2023 seatbelt use rate was 91.9%, but we can do better. And in 2021, there were 11,813 unbuckled passenger vehicle occupants killed in crashes. And 57% of those deaths were unrestrained backseat passengers. Regular seatbelt use is the single most effective way to reduce injuries and fatalities in motor vehicle crashes and is the best defense against impaired, aggressive, and distracted drivers. The use of seatbelts is supported by the laws of the City of Sandusky, and now, therefore, we do hereby announce May 19 through June 1, 2025, as click-it-or-ticket in the City of Sandusky, and we urge all citizens to always wear their safety seatbelts when driving or riding on our roadways dated this 12th day of May 2025.
Ms. Mars, I'll ask you to provide this to Chief Al. Any residents with comments regarding tonight's agenda, please step to the podium and share with us your name and address and your agenda comments.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tim Schwanger, 362 Sheffield Way. Question on item B, which is on the consent agenda, is do we offer other nonprofits the opportunity to lease the Popcorn Wagon besides the State Theater? I don't know if we bid that out every year or give others an opportunity. I'm going to put on my waterfront watchdog hat for a second here and ask some questions on item four and five, which is the Battery Park Shoreline Structure Repair Ordinances and Resolutions. If we can get an answer on how this project is being funded and how much it's going to cost, that'd be great. And when will the actual plans for the breakwalls, breakwaters, and the outer walls of Battery Park, when will those plans, the exact plans, be available for public view? I know probably two years ago, from conversation at this table, indicated that the public would be kept informed every step of the way on this project, whether it be the Battery Park condominiums or the breakwalls. And just curious as to whether or not we could hold some kind of a public information session like we did for the Jackson Street Pier and a couple other city waterfront projects. Number three question is part of the lengthy supporting documents mentions that a portion of one submerged land lease will be transferred or conveyed over to a different submerged land lease, and it kind of looks like perhaps the Sailing Club or Sailing Basin is somehow involved in this Battery Park project. Number four question is, do these ordinances provide for an extension of the yearly lease agreement with Battery Park and Marus Brothers? Very quickly, item number six is the Landmark Commission, and this is kind of a situation where there's language being changed in the membership of that group, which would allow nonresidents to be on that board. And that's one of the things that, right now, the Charter Review Committee is discussing, trying to tighten that up a little bit so that we can make sure that we have Sandusky residents on our committees. And I understand that, you know, it's been indicated that sometimes it's hard to get numbers, but the reason for that, in my humble opinion, in following what's going on here is that we don't do a very good job of marketing that we have openings on these different committees. I think that in December, at the end of each year, the chairman or vice chairman or somebody on this board should take charge of, hey, you know, we have openings coming up in January on various boards. There should be an announcement here if somebody steps off a board, and we're having a hard time getting somebody to find that, fill that spot. The announcement should be made here that we have an opening on the Landmark Commission or, you know, whatever commission. So that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schwanger. We'll address those questions as the legislation comes before us, but I will address your last question regarding item six. I have removed from the agenda because it has occurred to us after that was printed that we do need a public hearing prior to enacting that legislation. So a public hearing will take place, and that piece of legislation will come back to us at a later date. Any additional comments from the audience on agenda items? Not commissioners, yet. Before you, several communications from staff recommending various pieces of legislation. Can I have a motion to accept these communications?
So moved. Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Commissioners, we have six items on the agenda this evening. Do any of you wish to move any of those items to the regular agenda? Ms. Mars, will you present the consent agenda for us?
Item A, approval to amend CRA agreement for 1203 Campbell Street lofts. Item B, approval to extend services agreement of Red Popcorn Wagon with State Theater. Item C, approval to amend ordinance 25-055, funding split of West Monroe Street project with Spear Brothers. Item D, approval of change order one and final for Amtrak HVAC and STS maintenance garage project with Holer.
Commissioners, having heard these ordinances and a resolution, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I move for the adoption of these ordinances and the resolution pursuant to the section of the city charter indicated in the communication.
Second.
There been a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Whirling, I wonder if you could, if you would have an answer for the question regarding how we bid that or who we, how we entertain bids for that Popcorn Wagon?
Sure. For the longest time, we had a partnership with the United Waverly County, and they would use their partnering agencies to man and staff the Popcorn Wagon. At some point, it was tough to get volunteers to kind of cover that schedule for the length of that schedule. So we took it on, as far as the city parks and recreation, took it on for probably, say, a year or two, and tried to fill in with various organizations to handle a weekend here and a weekend there. When we discussed with the State Theater, they had the Carroll Crane Youth Theater that works with them and could provide those volunteers consistently through all the dates that we needed. So we started a partnership with the State Theater, I believe it was three years ago, and it was, it's been successful as far as they manage all the volunteer hours. We get the popcorn kernels donated from Slushman Seed, and we get the boxes donated through Civista Bank for that process. So I haven't had anybody come to us as far as another nonprofit, but I'm sure if there was a nonprofit or another organization that came to us that wanted to help kind of staff those hours, I can get them in contact with those folks.
That's a very satisfactory answer. The only question I was going to have is, had you had other people reach out to you? And we, you know, we would always treat this as a competitive type of situation if you did.
Correct.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Whirling.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wadding.
On item A, I'm really excited. I drive by that old Campbell school probably three or four times a week. All kinds of activity going on there. I see dumpsters, vans, trucks around the back. They even kept the grass cut, so that's nice. But I guess piggybacking off this is Osborne School. It's like dormant. Do we have any updates on that? I mean, I haven't seen a soul there. I drive by that once or twice.
Thank you for the question, Commissioner. Just this morning, I did ask the developer for an update, so I will be able to provide that at the next meeting.
Additional discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Coontz.
Quickly, I want to address a couple of issues related to item A, so I can feed the village with a couple of pieces of bread, and so I don't have to speak on this again. As it relates to the Campbell Street property, I have no interest in it whatsoever, hadn't had interested in it in 15 years. And when I did, it was 15 minutes of time for me to sign it over. So let's put that to rest. The other issue is involving the schools, and this is one of the reasons why I abstain, because I'm an administrator for the school system, so I will abstain from every vote related to the school system, particularly whether they're receiving money or losing money. So that's all I have to say on that.
Thank you, Commissioner Coontz. Commissioner Crable.
I just, I realize that the law in the State of Ohio has changed, and essentially, that's why this amendment is being offered. Basically, it has to do with whether the school board has to vote to accept or not accept and that sort of thing. And there was a time when that was the case. It is no longer the case under state law. But what I wanted to do is convey, and I have conveyed this to our city manager, that I would hope that, as a matter of courtesy, that we would, when these kinds of things come up, where abatements or the tax base for the school district is or might be affected, that they receive word of that from us, just as a matter of courtesy.
Thank you, Mr. Crable. Additional discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
I thought on the tax abatement, if it's above 75%, you have to get the school approval. If it's 75 or below, you don't have to. And in that legislation, I think they did change it where you have to give the schools notifications, so that should be happening down the road here.
Thank you.
Excellent. Ms. Mars, you can call the roll on the motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coontz?
With the exception of item A abstaining, and yea on the rest.
Now on the ordinances and resolution.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coontz?
Yea on all, with the exception of item A, I'll abstain.
Those ordinances and resolution are approved. Ms. Mars, you present item number one on the regular agenda.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Erie Blacktop Incorporated of Sandusky, Ohio, for the East Perkins Avenue resurfacing project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to adopt this ordinance under Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Mars, you call the roll on that motion, please.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Abstain.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coontz?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Abstain.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coontz?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Mars, you present item number two.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Fike Contractors Incorporated of Sandusky, Ohio, for the Mills Creek Golf Course Bridge Replacement Project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Coontz.
Move for approval of the ordinance under item two, under suspension of the rules and under chapter 14 of the city charter.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Mars, you call the roll on that motion, please.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coontz?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Mars, you present item number three.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Jagger Construction LLC of Lima, Ohio, for the amenities at Ambet's and Sprow Parks project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Barnes.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Mars, you call the roll on that motion, please.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coontz?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coontz?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Mars, you present item number four, please. There are two resolutions in that. I'll ask you to present resolution number one on item number four first.
It is requested a resolution be adopted pursuant to Section 1506.11 of the Ohio Revised Code, finding and determining that based upon the representations and application filed by the City of Sandusky and use and development of the territory so described, a modified submerged lands lease file number S U B 0530-ER may be entered into the State Director of National Resources, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this resolution, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wadding.
I move for the adoption of this resolution 4-1, under suspension of the rules in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Gilson, I know that you have been actively involved in this process, and I wonder if you can both answer the residence question and explain to us exactly what's going on here.
Sure, I will do my best. I believe there was four questions asked related to cost and what we'll be paying for the associated costs, whether or not we can have a public information session, whether the Sandusky Sailing Club is involved in these improvements, as well as whether or not there's an extension of lease terms. What I can share is the submerged land lease modifications pertain to the shore structure, which are Meg Street Pier, North Breakwaters, Water Street Pier, Springer's Wharf, East Breakwaters, and the Marina Bulkheads, also include all the floating dock systems. I have seven points of what will be done involved in this. If you'd like me to go through all of those, I have no problem doing so.
I would, I think that would be welcome, if you do that, not necessarily for us, but I mean for the viewing public also.
For sure. I will note that, and I did answer Mr. Schwanger's email just a bit ago, that the cost estimates are still being formulated, so there isn't a total cost available today, as well as lining up the funding that we'll pay for that. So all piers, breakwaters, and bulkheads will be raised in elevation to accommodate for the year-over-year increased projected wave heights. Meg Street Pier will receive new bulkhead shoring, lighting, concrete finishing, and amenities. New piling and floating dock systems will be installed on the marina side of the pier for transient boat usage. Number three, North Breakwaters will receive new armorstone bulkhead shoring, lighting, concrete finishing, and amenities. New piling and floating dock system will be installed on the marina side of the breakwater for fuel dock relocation. The marina's existing fuel dock will be relocated to the North Breakwaters for better marina configuration. Number four, Water Street Pier Springer's Wharf will receive new bulkhead shoring, lighting, concrete finishing, and amenities. New piling and floating dock system will be installed on the marina side of the pier for transient boat usage. Number five, East Breakwaters will receive new armorstone bulkhead shoring, lighting, concrete finishing, and amenities. Number six, Marina Bulkheads will be reconstructed with new shoring and concrete finishing. And number seven, floating dock system will be reconstructed with new piling, gangway floats, stringer, decking, mechanicals, electricals, and amenities. Other items associated with this application request extends the lease to 99 years, amends both submerged land lease to split parcel B, which is the conveyance parcel, requests the reuse of materials as core fill to raise the shore structures, and exemption from water ban between March 15 and June 30.
Thank you, Ms. Gilson. And I appreciate you going through that exercise. In a Reader's Digest version of that, would it be accurate to say that we're getting this submerged land lease in place to fit what they're going to build?
Absolutely.
So that they're not, they're not paying a lease on waterway, but they're paying a lease on what, on how that marina is going to end up?
That is correct.
That's what I boiled it down from after my reading. Thank you for going through that exercise. Another question, and I think it's a valid one, is communicating that final design or communicating those seven points that you just listed, we have the ability to put that on our website, or can we, how do we share that? How can we best share that with the community?
We will work on a communication strategy so that is shared with the community.
Excellent. Thank you. That's a very valid request, and I appreciate you being willing to do that. Additional comments or questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
Just a few questions from Ms. Gilson. So if I understand it correctly, the basic configuration of the walls and the hard structures, not the floating docks, that remains essentially the same, and we are simply updating that to reinforce it and to provide better finishes and lighting.
Correct.
And then, secondly, there was a question posed about whether this impacts the Sailing Club. As I understand it, it does not impact the Sailing Club, except to the extent that it's improving the outer walls.
That is correct.
And then finally, if I understand this correctly, this is a cost. Although we don't know how much it's going to cost, that's not our concern, because we are not paying for it. That is going to be the tenant who is going to be paying for that.
That is correct.
Thank you.
What is oftentimes deceiving, at least for myself, what is deceiving, is we will get legislation here where we, as a city, we have to pay that fee, but we're only advancing that money because the money comes back to us post-haste, I think, after we pay that. Additional comments or questions, Commissioners? Ms. Mars, we poll the Commission on that motion.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coontz?
Yes.
And now on the resolution, number one.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coontz?
Yes.
And now on the resolution, number one.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
obtain a shore structure permit for repairs to existing shore structures relating to the submerged lands lease file number S U B 0530-ER and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this resolution, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 4-2, second resolution pursuant to Section 14 of the city's charter.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you poll the Commission on that resolution, please. On the motion, please.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
That resolution is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number five, Resolution Number 1.
It is requested a resolution be adopted pursuant to Section 1506 dot 11 of the Ohio Revised Code, finding and determining that based upon the representations and application filed by the City of Sandusky, the use and development of the territory so described, a modified submerged lands lease file number S U B 0385-ER may be entered into by the State Director of Natural Resources and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this resolution, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Coons.
Move for adoption of this resolution under Item 5 in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you poll the Commission on that motion, please.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
And now on the resolution.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
That resolution is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number two of item number five, Resolution Number 2.
It is requested a resolution be passed authorizing and approving the submission of an application to the Department of Natural Resources Office of Coastal Management to obtain a shore structure permit for repairs to existing shore structures relating to the submerged land lease file number S U B 00385-ER and declaring that this resolution take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this resolution, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Murray.
I move for the adoption of this Resolution 5-2, under suspension of the rules in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you poll the Commission on that motion, please.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
That resolution is passed. Ms. Myers, you present our new item number six, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the serving our seniors to provide a grandparents-raising grandchildren respite program through the Recreation Department and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Pajali.
I would move to adopt this ordinance in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion.
Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I have a question for Mr. Worley. Mr. Worley, it indicates that the program, the communication indicates that the program will be evaluated and presented to the serving our seniors trustees following the pilot program. Do you anticipate that that would include a breakdown of the number of people who participated?
Yes, it would include the amount of how many grandparents and then how many of the grandchildren were part of it.
Great, that would be helpful. I think it's an innovative program, and I'm happy to support it. While you're at it, though, could we get a breakdown of the daily participation of the youth at that center? I don't think, we've talked about getting that, but I don't recall having seen that over the last couple of years.
Sure, so our daily numbers in our summer, out of school, and our spring out of school, and all those programs. Yeah, we're currently about...
All the Mills Program.
After school. We have attendance on a daily basis. I think about this time of year, we're at 55 to 65 kids per day, Monday through Thursday, out of school.
Be good to know. I get questions about it, and I'd like to be able to answer them.
Sure.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Vargo.
And Jason, is that the time that it's open, is right after school, right now, until when?
3:30 till, everyone's picked up around by 7 o'clock.
Okay, and then once school's out, what are the hours?
We start the second week in June, and there'll be 10 to 2, Monday through Friday.
And then that's?
For summer break. That's the eight-week summer break camp.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Additional comments, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to note that Sue Doherty, she, some of her creative ways, she finds problems or encounters problems and finds a way to solve them, so we appreciate the things you do for the city, Sue.
I think Ms. Doherty can read the room, and she realizes that this is going to pass, so she's not at that microphone lobbying as like she usually is. Congratulations, Ms. Doherty, you figured it out. Additional comments or questions? Ms. Myers, you poll the Commission on that motion, please.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number seven, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a five-year agreement with the Ohio State University, Ornet of Columbus, Ohio, for the purchase of a subscription licensing for the city servers through the State of Ohio Department of Administrative Services Cooperative Purchasing Program as authorized by O R C Section 125.04C and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Crable.
I move approval of item number eight, ordinance under item number eight, and declare that this take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you poll the Commission on that motion, please.
Didn't that, no, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I thought that number changed. Number seven.
Number seven.
Yeah, item seven.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number eight.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to accept grant funds in the amount of $477,000 from the Sandusky Education Foundation, S E F, for the tennis complex, authorizing the city manager to execute the grant agreement and to expend the funds consistent with the grant agreement, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wanting.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance and suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
Just want to express my thanks to our manager, John Orzak, for skillfully bringing this to conclusion. Much appreciated, a lot of work, and you are really a very fine city manager. I hope you stay here for another 10 years. I'm trying to box him in a corner, but he's not letting me out. Mr. Chairman, can we put that in the form of an ordinance or something?
He's trying to get another 10 minutes, 10 years. Additional comments or questions? Ms. Myers, you poll the Commission on that motion, please.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number nine, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Erie Blacktop Incorporated of Sandusky, Ohio, for the tennis courts project and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. President.
I would move to adopt this ordinance in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you poll the Commission on that motion, please.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Abstain.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Abstain.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Abstain.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Abstain.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number 10, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a license agreement with Sandusky City Schools for priority use of the tennis complex located at 1708 Hayes Ave or substitute site for the Sandusky City Schools' girls' and boys' tennis programs beginning July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2035, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to adopt this ordinance in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you poll the Commission on that motion, please.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Abstain.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Abstain.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present our last item, item number 11.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a license agreement with Sandusky Central Catholic Schools for use of the tennis complex located at 1708 Hayes Ave or substitute site for the Sandusky Central Catholic Schools' girls' and boys' tennis programs beginning July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2035, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance pursuant to Section 14 of the city's charter.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you poll the Commission on that motion.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Staying.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Mr. Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Abstain.
That ordinance is passed. That concludes our regular agenda. We'll turn to our city manager for his report.
Good evening, commissioners, audience, and staff. I would just like to thank the staff that were involved in this tennis situation as well. Michelle, Law Department, ALOT, Erin, Colleen's staff, they did a lot of work behind the scenes and got the project to where it is right now. So I appreciate all of their time and efforts in this matter. For donations, we have, we'd like to thank Jennifer Washington for donating her $15 and change for Midtown Supper Club Dinner. I'd like to thank A New Day Rental for donating the tables that were used for Midtown Supper, and thank Decor and Love for donating the pipe and drape that was used for the stage Midtown Supper Club. If I get a motion to accept all those donations.
Some move.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. No objection, the motion will be approved here. No objection, that motion is approved. Our thanks to all those folks.
For the fifth consecutive year, the police department was awarded the Lexi Poll Connect Gold Award for excellence in law enforcement policy management. The 2024 Water Quality Report is in the process of being distributed and is currently available on the city website. Big Island Water Works continues to meet and exceed all established drinking water standards. We are currently hiring property inventory surveyors for the upcoming property inventory and conditional assessment with the Western Reserve Land Conservancy. For more information about the inventory and the available positions, please visit We will have a full presentation with more details about the project at the next city commission meeting on May 27th. And the Public Arts and Culture Commission approved a $3,600 grant to support the launch of the Sandusky Sunset Celebration, a weekly summer event featuring live music and performance art timed with sunset at Jackson Street Pier. The funding will go directly to paying artists and is part of a broader call for proposals to support newer expanded cultural programming in 2025 with a total program budget of $10,000. The event is being organized by the Greater Sandusky Partnership and aims to boost downtown vibrancy and celebrate Sandusky's waterfront. That's all in my report. I'm happy to take any questions.
Commissioners, have any questions for the city manager? That will move to items of old business. Any items of old business, commissioners? I have a, not necessarily an item of old business, but something that happened recently that was significant, I think, and it was Saturday, we did the dedication of the skate park and it, I will tell you that I just totally underestimated the value of that, of that project, much to my unrealistic belief. There were five, six, 700 people on that site on Saturday. And now I realize each time I drive by it, there's dozens of young people usually using it. So I was not a true believer in that, and I'm almost embarrassed to say that it took us a decade to pull that off. And really, it took a 100-year pandemic to make it happen because we used a million dollars out of the American Rescue Fund to do it, but thank God we did because I think it's, I think it's a valuable asset. Boy, it's in a great, it's in a great place. Not my sport, obviously, but unless I wanted to spend the rest of my life in a nursing center, that would be. But I am proud of staff for having pulled that together. I know Aaron Blair had a lot to do with that. Our engineering department always has a lot to do with projects like that. So kudos to staff for pulling it off. It's a wonderful amenity. Any additional items of old business?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Fargo.
Could we get an update, the demolition that's going to occur at that home on Columbus Ave? Do we have a timeline on that?
15/27.
Yeah, we do, but I don't remember what it was.
28.
That was awarded to Mr. Blue.
I know by the end of the month, I'm pretty sure that it's supposed to be down, but I'll get you.
I think they're just asking.
It's going to be soon.
Yeah, just looking to see when the action occurs.
Yep.
Thank you.
Additional items of old business? Any items of new business? I have a housekeeping item here that I will ask for a motion to set a public hearing for a zone text amendment to the Landmark Commission ordinance at the June 23rd meeting.
So moved.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you poll the commission on that motion, please.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
That public hearing is set for June the 23rd. Additional items of new business?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Coons.
As it relates to the ODNR submerged land lease modification and shore permit, I'm a public information session kind of guy, so when I, when I hear that, I don't know what the protocol is, but I did hear something about communication and how it will be communicated. So I'm a person who would be willing to even facilitate that or make sure I'm there if you so choose to have a public information session to inform the residents and give them an opportunity to talk about that. So I just wanted to get that on the table.
Thank you, Mr. Coons. Additional items of new business?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Crable.
Yes. This comes on the heels, unfortunately, of some activity that occurred over the weekend, Saturday evening into Sunday, I believe. And I guess, I don't think I need to make a motion or anything else unless, Mr. Chair, you tell me that I should, but I would ask that Chief Oliver and our city manager work together and perhaps come back to us with some recommendations on additional steps that we might take as a commission to eliminate this all-too-frequent situation with gunfire taking place in our community. The, just some, some thoughts on my part, and I've conveyed these earlier today, but I'll do it so that it's, the public understands. Number one, I think that these parking lots have to be lit up in the evening hours in a significant way. Now, you know, I was very, very much a part of and supportive of the, you know, not, not throwing too much light up into the sky, so this would have to be down lighting, clearly. But I think that certainly the parking lot where the activity took place this past weekend, it would be one site, possibly the parking lot behind the State Theater, but I'll leave that to, to our city manager and to our police chiefs to respond in that regard. I think that we should probably also be looking at the installation of cameras so that not, not just so that we can see if there's a problem, who, you know, who caused the problem, but also hopefully to kind of pass the word on that we're not going to take this any longer. We're just not going to tolerate this kind of behavior. And thirdly, something that I was not aware of, but I became aware of through my involvement with the Blue Ribbon Committee and feedback from the police chiefs and the sheriff and all in the area, and that is the use of Flock cameras, I believe I'm pronouncing that properly. There are a handful of them that are in, in place in other parts of the county. I believe there are two, maybe on Perkins Avenue, there's one in Castalia, there's probably a couple other locations as well. But Flock cameras, and I'd be happy to defer to the chief if you, if you would prefer to maybe cover what they are and how they function.
Yeah, so Flock cameras are license plate readers. Their function is they take a picture of the back of a vehicle, back of the vehicle captures the rear license plate. That's all it does. They have an internal program there that identifies what kind of car that is. So what we do here in law, with law enforcement with that is you basically will set those cameras up at entrances and exits of certain areas, specifically some entrance and exits are normal for downtown businesses, a lot of it around the outer perimeter of the city. There are Flock cameras, City of Huron has Flock cameras, Perkins Township has a few, some of the resorts have a few, and Erie County Sheriff's Office has a few, and we've used those repeatedly. Our most recent issue with the Flock cameras, we had a car involved in a pursuit that fled through the city and ultimately out into the county, and we actually pulled the car up on a Flock camera. That's how we identified who was involved in that. That's how we ultimately prosecuted them. They do not retain any personal identifying information, they don't even give you personal identifying information. It gives you what the plate is and what the car comes back on, and there's a rolling 30-day window for that activity. So you have 30 days from the time an incident happened to search the Flock database, and that database goes throughout the country. So if we have a missing juvenile here, and this has happened, not through Flock, but not, not for us locally through Flock, but through the Flock system, if there's a juvenile that's kidnapped or missing and you have information where you know there was a red vehicle involved, you could type in red vehicle, it's a wild card search, and you could actually find that vehicle and then follow that through the country if there were Flock cameras set up. They are throughout the country. They're all over Ohio, all over out the West Coast, they're everywhere. You asked me to get a price for that earlier, they already have that, so I'll turn that in to the city manager.
My thought is, you know, two weeks when we meet again, that maybe that's presented. If I might, back when the chiefs and the sheriff and all were presenting to the Blue Ribbon Committee, one of the stories that came forward, I think that this is illustrative of what we're dealing with and how really valuable this technology is, was that there was a gun incident, I believe it was in Tiffin, and the individual was, I believe, suspected of living in Sandusky at the time, and I don't, I have no idea when this occurred, how many years ago or anything else.
In the last couple of months, sir.
But they, on their way back from Tiffin, went through Castalia. Well, lo and behold, the system said, wait a minute, here's, here's the perpetrator of that crime, and Sandusky Police were waiting in the driveway when they got home. So it's an extremely powerful and valuable tool for public safety, and it's not just, you know, gun-related incidents, as the chief pointed out, it can be a missing child, it can be any number of things. But I would hope that that might be some of the information that you would bring back to us here in a couple of, a couple of weeks. I really would like to see us as a, as a community move forward and do our very level best to stop this activity that's going on.
Well, you have my word as a police chief that our officers do everything within their power currently.
Oh, I know.
And they'll continue to do so, but the information you request, I'll gladly meet with the city manager, we'll have some conversations, and I'll go at his discretion where we go from there.
Very good.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Fargo.
We're probably going to say the same thing. Just first of all, thank you for everything you're doing, you know, one of, and I can't speak for everyone up here, but I really believe that everyone feels this way, is that the safety of our residents and our citizens and visitors and anyone who's in our community feels safe to be here. And so whatever you need from the city, our city manager, to the police department, to the legal department, whatever we can do to help make sure that that message is out, that we're going to keep people safe, we're not going to have these types of things occurring, or if they are, we're going to deal with them swiftly and do what, what we can. There's bad apples out there, and unfortunately, people do things that we can't control everything, but we have to do our best to make sure we're prepared and we, there's so many options out there, cameras are just one, but you have a lot of ideas already, Jared, and I appreciate it. So I just want the community to know, we're all on board with this and working together, and it's not just downtown, it's anybody walking out of their house anywhere in their community, they need to feel safe. It's not just about down here. So it just happened to be down here, and it did go out into the neighborhoods this last weekend, so we want people to feel safe and know that they're safe. So, so thanks for everything you're doing, but we look forward to supporting you in what ways we can move forward.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, if I might add, I would just hope that when you come back that Ms. Reader and our legal counsel have also had an opportunity to weigh in from their perspectives that, you know, from a legal standpoint, that we're on solid ground and financially, that, you know, if you, if there's a recommendation coming forward about, you know, purchasing services or equipment or what have you, that we're in a good place to be able to pay for it.
I don't intend to speak for, Chief Oliver, he does a much better job speaking for himself than I ever will, but I will speak from a perspective of having sat at this table for a dozen years now and lived through events like we had over the weekend. It is, I am constantly pleasantly surprised at the results that our police department turns up after these incidents. We always get them, and we don't get them the same night that the incident happens, but we've been sitting here and we're talking about technology, and technology is a wonderful thing, we should embrace it, we should fund it any chance that we can that makes sense. And I think this commission is resolute that they'll do that. But oftentimes, what it comes down to is good old-fashioned police work and talking to people in the community, talking to people on the street, talking to people that were around when something like this happened. That's what our police officers do best, and I am not going to predict how this event's going to turn out, but I, I will be, I think I will once again be pleasantly surprised with the results that we have after the fact. I, I'm realistic enough to know that we can put a platoon of Marines on every street corner in this city, and you cannot keep some person from doing something stupid, and that, and that's going to happen. We have to clean up the mess after that, and we have an obligation, I believe this commission believes, we have an obligation to employ any, any, any item, whether it's technology or good old-fashioned fashion police work to make, to make that a reality.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Coons.
I'll just add one more thing to the conversation. I agree with all of the commissioners and what has been said with one caveat, and that is that, and I think you touched on this, Commissioner Vargo, that anytime this happens anywhere in the city, we have to basically do what we can to address the situation. But as one who worked at a bar and worked my way through college bartending, I know one of the problems is what happens in the parking lots, right? And being able to communicate with maybe these business owners and find out what's going on, I know they sometimes have security, they'll try to do that, but most cities that I've lived in, and I've lived in about three large cities, two mid-sized cities, every time I hear about, well, not every time, but most often I hear about a shooting, it happens because of the congregation that was happening outside, that they weren't told to move on, it could happen somewhere else, but that's been my experience. Anything that can address that, you know, I leave that up to you all, but I wholeheartedly agree that, you know, we have to watch the entire city in terms of these bars everywhere and not just the downtown area, so.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, it was just to enhance your message, it wasn't to disparage anything.
No, no, no.
So.
Additional items of new business?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to ask the chief, how long has it been since we incorporated foot patrols down in the downtown area?
So we do foot patrols currently, and we have, yeah. Obviously, we're seasonal, right? I mean, it's not the dead of winter and you see us walking around unless we absolutely have to, but they do those downtown, but to Commissioner Coons's point, we also do foot patrols in neighborhoods. It really is just dependent on the call volume, officer activity, but our officers stress community policing, and as part of that's foot patrols. The caveat for Saturday was, it was call after call after call, but we actually had two officers or three officers tied up on two calls right around the corner from when this all first started, and then it, it went to the neighborhoods and we're, we're there too, so they do do that. It's just what times and, you know, we leave that up to the event and the venue and where we're going to be to do that, but our foot patrols in the neighborhoods are usually during the daytime or the evening in the parks, and in downtown, it'll be here after hours when they're around.
Additional items of new business? That will move to any residents with comments regarding city business. Please step to the podium and share with us your name and address and your item regarding city business.
Good evening.
Hi.
Good evening.
Evening.
Second time around the block that I came down and discussed a couple of things with the commission board, specifically with the extension of the moratorium. I think we talked about that before when I came down. So what I did, I contacted the Ohio Civil Rights Commission. They assisted me in some of my issues with not really a biased approach to it, but a post that seemed like it was kind of a conflict. I found it kind of hard to believe when I spoke to the investigator that, you know, people in this commission that own a large amount of property in this community, they own businesses in this community, they have unique relationships with other people in this community, and any people look like me. So when I told him that, he said, well, you have to provide me a little more information. I said, we got bored of millions, that's a millionaire sitting on this council, that got business and influence over a lot of stuff going in this community, and any people look like me. So with that being said, I contacted Ms. Blair, she gave me some information, I passed it on to the investigator, he contacted HUD, he contacted the commission down in Columbus. So I said, you know, it's interesting now, when I came in tonight, I hear, you know, me being in federal law enforcement for so many years, retiring next month, and to hear people talk about, you know, all the shootings going on, all this stuff like that. It's a tourist city. 4.4, 4.4 million people coming to the city every season, five-month increments, and we're talking about impact. It ain't so much all the time in the neighborhoods, I'm from the South Side. It's the people that come through here between Detroit and Cleveland and Columbus, men in relationships, that's the crime. My name holds a lot of weight in the city. When I come through, people know me, that's what I do. But I have a hard problem sometimes with looking at people that really don't come from where I come from, and they're getting a lot of money out of the city. I own events here all the time, give money back, cancer, mentorship programs, out of my pocket, NACA program right down here on, at State Theater, out of my pocket, to help people buy homes, no money down, no closing costs. Look me up. That's what I do. So with that being said, the reason why I feel that I have to go through these means to get attention from the city, this might do. I'm at the federal level, I've been there so long, but one thing I know about, when you fight, it encourages people to come down here that look like me, and they say, I never knew they was doing that down there, I never knew I couldn't do what I could do with my properties, I didn't know that they could hold me off from doing this, man said, oh, I'm going to retire and go to Cleveland, I thought I could rent my property out. He said, city, say, hell no, you can't do that. So basically, he felt like they saying, that's my property, you don't own that, you just pay the taxes and pay the mortgage on it, we going to tell you what to do with it. Doesn't make a lot of sense. It doesn't do me due diligence to look up behind people and read their bios, look up their homes and say, these people living in million-dollar homes all over the city, getting all this money, and I got people on the South Side working two or three jobs, struggling, trying to figure out, hey, if I had this opportunity to do this and maybe rent my house out, let my kids go to college, put a little money up. Ain't no jobs here. The biggest base for hourly rate here is $20.56. I'm a statistic dude, I look it up, because I want to provide people a platform to understand transparency when it comes to city government and the hood. Coons from the hood, dudes know Coons. Do you see people flocking down here to support him on the span? No. If he wouldn't have been here today, you count the heads, I wouldn't be. So there's a bridge that got to be met between the commissioners and the hood. Y'all going to mend them relationships. Y'all going to need to offer something to say, hey, yeah, we going to live good, we going to try to provide you guys an avenue to live good too, we going to open some doors for you, some extra manure ship, Airbnb or any of the other outlets that might be helping you guys, you got a billion-dollar machine across the bridge over here on the peninsula that people can't eat off of, because people going to say, well, you live across the street, no money for you. We're just going to pick and choose where we're going to open these markets up throughout the city, but these people have been here all their life, paying taxes, watchdog in the neighborhood, you telling people to go home for our discipline when we were young, old cats like him, and you telling me he can't eat? He can't provide an opportunity to rent his home out for Airbnb or whatever purpose it may be? Me and my sister rented out our house this weekend, I told her, we're not going to keep on fighting the moratorium, because that could go on forever. You just sit here and say, a guy said, he had to wait 10 years to get a solution or something. Who got 10 years? I ain't got 10 years, love. Who knows? But it's the reality of the situation. Sandusky is depleted with opportunities with money. I look at mugshot jail mugs every day from my office in Philadelphia, where I'm leaving to go from back, back to my office tonight in Philly, and I'm going to sit there, I'm going to look at jail mugs every day and point out, that's so-and-so's son, that's so-and-so's daughter, he works at a factory, she works as a nurse, she works as a CNA, and she works at the grocery store, and he works at some other plant, just to make it. So who are we are as successful people, because I'm blessed to say, based on TSP, I'm a millionaire when I retire next month, so I'm good, but I want everybody to be good. I can't just be good and sit back in my big house in Philadelphia in the suburbs and watch jail mugs, all these kids that we grew up with and their fathers and mothers suffering back in Sandusky, I could turn my back. I made it out, I'm good. But these are the things I look at and say, it ain't right. So who is it for us to sit back and say, we made it? White, black, or indifferent? And the police chief, yeah, he got a, he got a big job. I know about Longfellow, he got a big job. It's a small, it's a small increment, though. He got Sandusky. He got to figure out how to clean 4.4 million people coming in here, whatever they got every, every day, every weekend, he got to figure that out. If he can't figure it out, they going to get somebody to figure it out, because that's our government, where I come from, you can't figure it out, we going to get somebody a job who can figure it out. So what I've been doing for 28 years, I've been figuring it out. That's how it works. But for me to come back, have to take a time out to come down here and be like, hey, we got to figure this out. The money got to be figured out, the crime got to be figured out, all of it has to be figured out. But in the meantime, you take away the money from the hood, they coming downtown, they busting their cars into hotels, they doing all of that, because they figure Cedar Point is the engine that's bringing the people in with the money, and they going to say, hey, if the city's not going to give us the money to survive, we going to take it from the people, and when the people get scared, they ain't coming to Cedar Point, right or wrong? And when the people get scared, they ain't coming to Cedar Point, right or wrong? That's how the game work. So you better figure out a way to provide for these people that can barely survive in this city called Sandusky, so they ain't going to be running tourists out of here, messing up our tax base and making this place scary to be in. Because that's what the bigger picture is. If they scared to come, I throw a party for 18 years. A guy told me, he said, if they break out and shoot up the spot, the women ain't coming, and the money runs through the women. An old promoter taught me that.